I'm going to call meeting order. If you take a minute and read the minutes. And then entertain a motion when you're done.
Yeah, just one set. Two. Got two. December 3rd to December 17th.
When is the change that we voted on?
Oh, I see. Just the 17th.
Yeah, while you're reading that, there are actually two sets of minutes. One of them is the updated version of the December 3rd meeting that we made modifications to and then voted on. The concern about tonight is the 17th. Everybody have a motion out there?
My motion would be accept the minutes. December 17th.
Is there any second?
A second.
Anybody have a question, concern? Jess?
Well, almost, most random. Yeah, Jess Gallagher. And under new business in the second paragraph. I think it was Yuli. I don't remember who, which one of us. It was not one of the others.
I can find you.
Yes. I remember.
Okay. I can look at my notes.
Where is it?
Just Gallagher.
Oh, yes, there it is, there it is. Alright, so you take care of that. Any other comments? All in favor then? All opposed? Alright, so we are moving right into the resource protection articles that we, I think, left about three weeks ago or so. There are no other new business, or there is no other new business. As far as I know, Leslie Burley is still on board, although I don't know anything about tonight. So, well, just wait and see. See if we hear from her. She just forgot. Alright, now, you can correct me here for a second, but I'm going to run back for a minute to two meetings ago where we recommended anyway, as I remember, a four to one to knock off both of those ordinance changes that came before the town meeting previous times. Okay. Last week, as I remember, or last meeting, I should say, as I remember, we had a little hesitation about that. It seems that there was some discussion about the zoning board of appeals changing a, I don't know what you would want to call it. Somebody came before Ken and wanted to do something on a lot that was in the resource protection and he denied it and they appealed it and the appeals board approved it. That being said, there was some discussion about the fact that we then, at that point, would not have any controls over the idea of making sure that this property that has finally been approved was going to be set up to not encroach on the lake. Alright? At least any more than what it already has. Whereby, when we give approval, we have that authority. So, if I remember correctly, that's kind of how we left it. We were a little back and forth, a little bit trying to decide how that was working and we pretty much said that we're going to bring that to that point up to today and then go forward from this point. Anybody remember that, that way or not that way?
I remember the conversation. Didn't they just bypass the board altogether? Right?
I think they did.
They went to Ken.
Yes.
Then they went to the appeals board.
Right, we never saw it.
We never saw none.
Never saw it, correct. That's why it was confusing at first, because I guess I thought at first that it was something that we had seen somewhere along the line.
Well, it was something that the chairman would have known about. So, it might have been during shift.
Maybe.
He should have gotten the results from that, is the big deal. It's not that we wouldn't have participated.
Right, right. I was just curious about it. You know, I was confused.
The other thing is, I don't even know if I can originally brought it up because that was, in that particular case, what they did was combine properties to make a conforming property, right? They did not conform.
It was actually administrative appeal. Because they were challenging his denial. His denial was based on information that our maps have. They show that it's different than what the maps are. He doesn't have the authority. He only has the authority to use the information that is provided to the town. If they show it differently, only the zoning board has that authority. But I think Ken was saying is that if this would have come to you first with special exceptions and things like that, then that might have been, his decision might have been different if it was going to come here and then you could impose conditions, reasonable conditions. I think that was his comment.
So, you may or may not have had a chance to read the letter that came to Ken that I think you have copies of in the aisle that you received before from Jen upstairs. Basically saying that again, as we knew, we have to make a decision by the 28th or get information to them on the 28th. Which, which leaves us tonight and one more meeting to make a final decision that we're going to do if we want something to come before the town meeting in June of 2016. Alright? They will, as the letter says, they will allow us to do public hearings after the fact, even if it's after the 28th, that's not an issue. The issue is they will not allow us to make any changes once we put it in to them later this month. If in fact we do that. You know, the way I look, I guess I look at it is that we have that time to do something. Whether we would have had time to rewrite something, I don't know. We have the option of leaving it the way it is right now. You have two of them on the books. Then you have the idea that it's going to go to the compromise one automatically because, you know, it's the more stringent one. And then focus on rewriting something for following year or for some other town meeting that might come along. That's another option. I guess I'm just throwing it out there for people to give me their input as to what you would prefer to do and where we want to go with this. I think I remember the four to one vote two meetings ago as being kind of a recommendation that we voted on to get that information to the board of selectmen. Let them know this is how we feel. I, I don't remember that as being something that we have done if for no other reason, an official way indicating that, okay, that's how we want the town meeting to go from our perspective. You may have remembered that vote as something different than that. I, I don't know. Again, I'm throwing that out to you too. There's a bunch of things I'm thinking about. I agree with you. That's what, I mean, that's how I think.
We were just barely beginning to. It was more like a sentiment.
We wanted them to know where we stood at that point. I think, I think that's how I recommend. How about you? How do you see it, Tom?
Well, I would be hesitant.
Yeah, but still, that's how, you know. How about you, Joe? Remember kind of that way too? Yeah, alright. And I, and I see it as a recommendation when I look at those minutes. And so I think that's how my interpretation is of the minutes that we have already approved. So, I think we're good.
On that letter that we read from Jennifer.
Yes.
How do you take a wave to public hearing?
I don't think they're.
Is it in the bylaws of the town, some type of rule within the towns?
Did it say wave? I don't think it said wave.
Well, they have after.
After.
How do you have an hearing after the fact?
No, after the time that we have to present it. Apparently if there's something that comes from the townspeople, maybe there could be a change. It's just that we can't.
That seems very gray.
It just doesn't sound right.
Who's going to say whether it was coming from the townspeople? Are they bringing in some special?
That would be somebody in the public hearing saying, you know, and adding something to it. Because originally they, they were saying the 28th, we want it done, there's no changes after. And I says, you have to have the public input because we've had them before and there's like, there's no changes. So, we're really just shoving it down your throat. So, without the public input, it's not a, oh, no, it's the whole town's.
I'm all for the public input, but how do you distinguish whether it was the public making the change or the board making the change? I mean, except for someone bringing it up, but I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, they would have.
I just see this kind of dubious gray. It's not that I'm not, I'm for the public input, I'm just, what if someone says, well, the public didn't say that? You put that in all its words, you know, or.
That was your husband that was there.
You don't want to add to that.
Yeah, yeah, so.
That's all I'm saying.
I, I know. It's just all, it's fuzzy. It's all just so fuzzy, you never know what's going on, it seems.
Oh, well.
Tom, question?
Another question, yes. I'd like to put a proposal up before the board. I was going through this stuff yesterday and a few things came up as questions in my mind, but I've resolved those and I'll explain what the resolution was. I thought we might have had some problems with some amendments that I'm considering, but I don't see that we do. Initially, I would suggest that we follow through on the notion of revoking or repealing the two existing 4226 items that's in the new ordinance and then put forth an amended ordinance that would be a compromise to the compromise. And, and I could go over the points and we can discuss them maybe one by one, I guess. The, you want me to do that?
I think the whole night's just for this, I didn't put anything else.
The initial language would be the same as it is, the planning board may approve a conditional use permit. Oh, excuse me. To see if the, I guess it's just the. The first sentence would read, the planning board may approve a conditional use permit for a single-family resident to a structure and any accessory structures in the resource protection district, comma, outside of the shoreline zone, provided that the applicant demonstrates that all of the following conditions are met. The next, under, under, this would be 1A. No location on the property, otherwise there will be no location within the resource protection district where the structure can be built. There is, it should read, there is no location on the property.
So, you're saying A would say the same?
Yes.
Okay.
B, a lot on which the structure is proposed is undeveloped. This is in accordance with the state language that the selectmen had opted. Although they didn't, they didn't specify it, there was a little error on their part, I guess. But this would be coming out of the state wording under special exceptions with the insertion of the word undeveloped. And was established and recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds before the adoption of the resource protection district on September 29th, 2011. Thought it important maybe to be more precise about that date designation.
Whoop, did you, you said the date, Tom, is it the date that was on? I'm sorry, I lost what you said.
The adoption of the RPD, Resource Protection District, on September 29th, 2011. Okay, so that's, that being, well, that isn't it.
So, the only thing we're adding, that's an underline, they were striking out, we're just adding is undeveloped.
Yeah.
Because the date's already in the ordinance.
Kenny, why does that say February 19th, 2015?
I don't think that's the official map, but.
No, it isn't, but why, why did they make one subsequent to the 2011?
I didn't forget my glasses to read with that yellow. What's it say in the yellow?
Act and draft shoreline zoning map 1 and 2, February 19th, 2015.
So, that, is it, is that the whole of the black ones on it?
No, that's over there.
I thought I lost the black ones. Because our land's in electronically.
Yeah, neither of these are the official.
Well, this is missing a lot of the wetlands.
Yeah. I don't know what that is.
Well, anyway.
That's probably what the black removed. The outside of the shoreline removed.
So, this 1B would coincide in your, in the state book that Brenda made up for us with Alex.
Chapter 1000.
This would be on page 50. Item 2 at the top of the page. So, that would be written out as, it appears in the state document, except we would just say York County Registry of Dees and write out the date so as to have no.
That's how the ordinance is now.
Change of error.
The date's in there, York County's in there as well.
Item C would be all proposed. Buildings, sewage disposal systems and other improvements are, so that would be verbatim from the state again. Located, C1, located on natural ground slopes of less than 20%. And, again, that's state language. Located outside the floodway. All of that privilege on 3B on page 50 would be lifted out whole cloth and suggested as being implemented in the new proposal. Item D, the total footprint, including cantilevered or similar obating extensions of all principal and accessory structures is limited to a maximum of 1,500 square feet. And this limitation shall not be altered by variance. I think that is also verbatim from the state language. And just as a sidebar there, that 1,500 square feet, just to give you a sense of the scale of that, is equivalent to a 26 by 36 foot footprint house, which would be 936 square feet plus an additional 20 by 24 foot square garage, which would be a total of 480. Total comes up to be just shy of 1,500. So, I think that's quite a, you know, state language, but just to show you the generosity that's involved there, it's quite, particularly for a lot that is undeveloped. Item E, all structures, except, that's just verbatim. Except for, in the second sentence, where it says, as determined by a, oh, in determining, just reading verbatim from the first sentence. All structures except functioning water-dependent structures are setback from the normal high-water line of water body, comma, tributary stream or upland edge of a wetland to the greatest practical extent, but not less than 75 feet horizontal distance. As, and I would insert here to avoid ambiguity or tug of war that we, we could get into later if we don't define this a little better. So, after the clause, less than 75 feet horizontal distance, I would add a comma there and insert the phrase, as determined by a main licensed wetland site evaluator. Or however else the board or Ken or Ken would feel it would be better expressed to make that a little more coherent and precise. I think that's one issue there that we could get into a real pissing match. Need not be in. And that's it.
So, what is in place here on the part that you have read to originally?
Yeah.
You've made a couple of changes and you've added a few things.
Yeah, rather than, and, and, well, the approach I would take just for cleanliness and ease of description at a public hearing would be to revoke the original VOS proposal and the original planning board proposal. So, the town, the county politics would just understand that both of those are going be putting aside and we are, in a sense, making a hybrid out of the state and local.
Well, what's hybrid about it? I mean, it sounds like it's the state thing, except that it's applying.
Outside of the shoreline zone.
Outside of the shore. But it's other than that, isn't it exactly the state rules?
Yeah, pretty much. Except for just that citation about the wetland site evaluator. And, and the, and we're being, we deferred from the original planning board one by stipulating undeveloped. So, we're returning back to state language. Yeah, it isn't a whole cloth change, but I think it's maybe easier for the townspeople to understand it as a a new entity rather than trying to cut and paste a pre-existing bit of work. That's just my sense.
Do you see that as a problem, the fact that it's lined up with the state?
Not at all.
Oh, okay.
Nope.
Wasn't sure how they were.
No, I, I like it. I prefer that we can uphold and I prefer the state limitations.
Are you preferring outside of the shoreline zone? I think that's what we'll have to go back to.
I mean, to some degree, yes, I am. I'm just saying, let's just do it, but, you know, I'm willing to compromise. I would, I would, I would, I would consider at this point, even though we've been here and there and everywhere, I would consider the original language that we were asked to adopt also long ago. But I'm not necessarily stuck on it being.
One question, Ken, in reference to that notion that I asked myself when I, when I was going through this is, two questions. One, how does this impact subdivisions? And I think that's addressed by having the date of establishing the law.
The lots pre-exist and you can't create it.
Right.
You can't use the resource protection lands size either.
But existing subdivisions that were in components prior to 9/29/11 should be fine. Because they're, the lot size would be such that, I can't think of one that would be in trouble there at all. And the other one was, just a generic question, how does this affect those people with or without development at the present time pertaining to these lots that are outside the shoreline zone that are, are impacted by the existing smaller wetland buffers? And, and that was one I, I was hoping you could steer us a little bit on.
There's about 87 lots that are in the resource protection outside of the shoreline zone. I just quickly counted, so plus or minus a few. But of the 87, 95% of them probably have land outside of the resource protection to build. So, you're really down to 10, 12 lots maybe at the most.
Would that be 87 that are undeveloped?
Most of them are. But one lot may have three different wetlands on it. So, I didn't count the wetlands. I looked at the lot and one wetland can encompass five or six lots in different variations.
I was trying to put myself in, in the, in the shoes of someone who has some development, you know, has a house and a garage or something or a shed on one of those little wetlands and, and, you know, they could have impinged prior to September 29th on that wetland with no, no upset. Versus someone who, who has a similar lot, but is undeveloped. I would think the, those two fellows would not have any antagonism toward one another. If, if the fellow whose lot is undeveloped is allowed to go ahead and, you know, do, utilize the lot as a residential lot. Given that his neighbor had done so, but at a previous time and I think it might calm the waters a little bit on the, on the issue of, that's been raised about, you know, taking so, and doing. But I would urge strongly to not consider going into the, to leave this, as it was originally worded, outside of the shoreline zone. I think to open up the shoreline zone anymore to development, that really raises some water quality issues for me that I would have trouble supporting that.
And what are the number of, I mean, are we down, is it literally just a couple properties that are in the shoreline zone that are affected or? Not the little, not the outside of shoreline zone, but the actual in.
In the shoreline zone? It's probably not come down to about the same thing. There, if there's, you know, 20 or 30, most of them still, there's probably some area that they can build and it's not just the resource itself, it's the buffer. The buffer is what gets most people's 250 feet. That's a huge buffer. I mean, most lots aren't 500 feet deep or whatever.
I don't know. If only there was a way you could let them, like allow, like a 10-foot encroachment, you know what I mean? If the encroachment was like limited, it would get too complicated to write out, but.
Jess, I.
If you could reduce the 250.
It may be interesting to look at one of these maps, if one of them is legible, but I doubt whether there's much RP under 10 acres that is part of the shoreline zone. You know what I'm saying? So, it would be, it would be.
Right, that's, but I'm, I'm still thinking, are we going for the whole, you know? Don't worry, I'm just thinking.
The lot, it's time to do it, it's now.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking. I, I'm also for your proposal for the non-shoreline. I was just wondering what was left of properties. What does that leave for undeveloped properties?
Another interesting point to just pointer a little bit is, there is still the tool of the 30% expansion in place for those properties that are developed at present and in the shoreline zone and want to expand. So, they do have this like a safety valve in existence on the boats that we wouldn't be tampering with if we chose to follow this.
What makes it tough is when you're out of the shoreline zone and in the resource protection because the house, according to state law, it had to been there prior to 1989 when shoreline zoning came on and we've got subdivisions that have resource, the new resource protection in it and the houses are, you know, three, four, five years old. So, once we figure out what we're going to do here, then we can look at the ordinance and make other changes in there.
Does anyone take a look, how much this is going to work? It's like the evaluation of the sound. Can we tackle probably?
I got a point for that. I, I would think, Skip, when, when these changes were implemented and say an African came in and they worked with them and they were allowed to build within the existing RP, I would, I would think, I would hope that there would have to be an adjustment on their assessment because they were, they were built for say, you know, 100 acres of RP prior to the building, but then they intruded on it X number of square feet. So, that, that previous negative value, so to speak, would have to be upgraded when they utilized that RP. You know, they could no longer get a break on that assessment, the little envelope. A little envelope, it's a miniscule.
Let the taxes will go up.
No, I'm not concerned so much about that. What I'm looking at is in the future, say we have ten lots right down on X lake. And right now they're limited to what they can build on it. And then we're going to take away and make it so that we can't build on it at all. You know, with all these new changes we've made over the years. Then eventually we're going to say to ourselves, hey, wait a minute. We get more people moving in town, we get more expenses, yet we can't utilize the most profitable tax bill we can classically send out, which is on the lakes.
Yeah. So this really doesn't affect the lakes? Because this is more of a swamp or a wetland or something like that, like the South African swamps or something like that. Well, those are shoreline zones. So these are just the smaller swamps. So it's really not high-value property to begin with. And then, a lot of times, every time there's a new ordinance or a regulation, it's more stringent. This is deregulation somewhat.
Ooh, what the hell is that going to happen?
So this is deregulation, this is allowing you to build, which basically the two ordinances are in there. And the more stringent is you can only do it outside the shoreline zone.
Yeah. Skip, if we, I think I'm correct in stating that if we were to follow my proposal, the existing lot on which there is no house or building or whatever, and through this process, the applicant is allowed to build and intrude somewhat on the RP, that the assessment on that lot would only increase to the town's advantage.
Well, just that's one question. You know, I'm looking at the financial end for the town. I mean, I want to see the water stay clean. I don't want to poll the down rivers or the lakes. But at the same time, I don't want to give up our biggest asset as far as income is concerned.
But that cuts both ways if you.
So you've got to come to a compromise. That's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for a compromise between the two. I don't expect to build any place in every place, but I do have, some of you, some reasonable things in the ordinance that do allow for some necessary building and some really just acceptable building. I mean, I don't want to take and shut the thing right down that we can't build nothing nowhere, you know?
That's what he's proposing. He's proposing that.
That's right.
Away from the shoreline, that, away from the shoreline.
Well, I'm looking at the, I'm talking shoreline right now. I'm not looking away from the shoreline.
You're talking about the developed shoreline?
Yes.
You're not talking about the undeveloped shoreline?
Undeveloped. The undeveloped shoreline.
Which, that would be a wetland greater than ten acres is going to be in the shoreline. It's not going to be square upon the great east. That's already all built out. So that would be a larger swamp or a stream or something like that.
So it's not a river.
Correct.
Or a river.
Or a river.
Okay. Then am I here to evince a like, well, no problem.
Yeah, yeah. Anything down there is going to be in the shoreline.
I just don't want to see, just cut my nose off despite my face. You've got to look at the financial aspects of the town in general. That's right.
Yeah.
Do we have a definition for undeveloped?
Non-developed.
But does that mean, like, no shed? Does that, like?
I mean, it gets fine when you're looking at logging roads and things like that.
The other one I could have said, the only definitions might be, there's a citation here. All proposed buildings, sewage disposal systems, and other improvements. We may want to nail improvements down. Like, I mean, does that include? I would hope it would not include your driveway, but that would be an item of interrogation. There's a definition for developed. A driveway could eat up a lot of square feet.
No fill. Just put a good button on it. No fill allowed, period.
Drive me where you want.
So while we're contemplating this for a second, am I being kind of led to believe here that we're going to be okay with getting rid of these two? And perhaps leaning toward, if not Tom's proposal, somewhere to that vein? Just so I have a handle in my head of which way we're going here. I mean, I know we're tossing this all out, but is this really what we're going to do, what we want to do?
Seems like the best.
And actually, I like the logic of throw them out, start fresh, an explanation at the public hearing at the end, you know, at town meeting.
I think the biggest point there would be the developed versus undeveloped. And the fact that we're extending the olive branches, in a sense, with that more than I think any other action we'd be taking. And we're, but we're sticking to our guns about outside of the shoreline zone. I think that would be an easy, too easy points to defend in a public forum.
I guess I'm not real comfortable yet with everything that you read to me and trying to catch up here and here, as opposed to seeing it in a nice and black and white piece of paper.
I'd be willing to come in tomorrow and work with Brenda if she has time to. I'm sorry I didn't have the ability or the time to take this up for me.
But I think you're looking at the state verbiage almost verbatim.
Right.
And just adding outside the shoreline zone.
And I would suggest that we insert the phrase, however you would describe it, a main license wetland site evaluator or whatever.
I think you're going to want some sort of a certified plot plan, the wetlands delineator. And maybe there's a specific one that we're not as concerned here. And there's going to be a specific one that you're going to want more information on because of the lot conditions and slopes and conditions of it and.
Yeah, couldn't we just do that as a condition?
As it goes through my office, we're going to require it before it even gets to you guys. That they're going to work with a surveyor and the wetlands delineated to delineate. Because you need the delineation of the wetlands to say, no, how close you are. So you're going to want that on and you're going to want the survey. Then you're going to, after the house is built, or at least the foundation's in, a certified plot plan would require to make sure it is, you know, thirty-six feet from whatever, just like the best possible locations.
Well, let me simply, Tom, just say, listen, what the state requires, and all we're doing is adding a sentence. And that way they'd be very easy to understand when it go before the town. Yeah. So we can't delete the state. We can make it more stringent, but we can't make it less. So this, we're following the state and we're just adding this sentence. And that would clarify it obviously. You can't vote the state thing out, no matter what. See, we're not the same thing we had this last rigamarole where you get two people voting to two different things.
The only difference with that is the state doesn't care if it's outside of the shoreline zone. If it's inside of the shoreline zone, it has to be very close to the verbatim. We're outside of the shoreline zone, so they're not going to approve it, review it, or key what it says. So this would be more stringent than the state would allow.
And as we presented it, I think it would all be underlined behind which.
Correct. We'll strike out the two that are there. This would be underlined.
You could actually say during the hearing that what we're doing is using the state to have a state format.
Correct.
So that way they would stop all the, look, we're using the state. This is not any one person's idea, what does the slack one of the board? It's a state.
The state guy. And to back that up, we could even have a little, a single page of the existing state showing where we altered it, you know?
The last, I'm kind of struggling with the undeveloped because the last time around, I think we, you know, we have a maximum in here of fifteen hundred square feet. So if somebody has, like, a little garage or a little shed on a piece of property, then it would be considered developed and they wouldn't, they wanted to build a small house.
Correct.
So I think we did kind of came to the conclusion that it was more, seemed more fair to, rather than having, that's what we struck there, undeveloped in the first place, right? With a maximum in there of fifteen hundred square feet, no matter what.
Kind of big to remember that, too.
And I think a driveway is going to be developed. If you have the driveway in there or a logging road that's been glorified and now it's a driveway, it's meet the definition of developed.
But we not carried away last time, though, too, because then we were envisioning houses that were partially in the buffer zone and partially not. And so your fifteen hundred was suddenly, you know, potentially fifty thousand. So I want to avoid that.
You mean if you have fifteen hundred, like, if you're half on the line and as long as you don't have fifteen hundred over the line?
Fifteen hundred foot garage next year.
Well, I think, though, then the argument, if you're before the city board, the argument would be that you have property to develop.
You shouldn't be in the resource production.
Or maybe we should specifically say the driveway, you know, maybe we should. Okay, well, it's possible.
Work on the definition of developed.
Work, yeah.
Or come up with an undeveloped definition.
I can't remember one time, I can't get this back in. We had one more time that you had a building under X amount of square feet for storage, if that wasn't considered developed. I think it was, I think it was like a ten by, ten by fifteen or a ten by twenty was considered, had we just considered storage shed, it wasn't considered developed property. We didn't have to get a permit, nothing with that. Take the time off, probably go further back when you remember. But we didn't have to get a permit for a building that small. So if you didn't have to get a permit, it could be developed.
Well, according to the definition, if you read the definition.
No, I'm just saying, I'm going back years back. We had that as a stipulation within the ordinance. It was X amount of square feet. And it was just a storage facility or parking a car or a shed or a wagon in it. But that wouldn't, you'd have to get a permit for it and wasn't considered a taxable property.
It sounds like it was a tax issue.
Yes, it was a tax issue in a preliminary plan.
Tom, I'm not married to that, as a sort of undeveloped type. If it makes it more, any more fair, which I, I mean, I can see that situation.
This is where the problem started last time. The undeveloped got taken out and then the shoreline got added and the undeveloped wasn't put in and.
Well, yeah, we took out the.
Flood and the can leavers.
Can leavers, which.
And then back in our original.
As long as we don't put shoreline zone in. As long as we stick with outside the shoreline zone, we do whatever we want to.
And I don't think the omission of the word undeveloped, thereby making it, as the planning board initial proposal was, either/or, either developed or undeveloped, would be eligible for the special exception. I don't think that would make a big difference on the map. How many lots could you have that would be typified by what Yoli just said, with a lot with a garage on it, you know?
I'd be more concerned about a lot with a driveway. Some sort of access or something like that, where they've cut the trees years ago. Or maybe they're using it for tenting or have an ivy or.
Well, maybe rather than, maybe we should just say without a previous structure on it or, I mean, maybe we should define. If you don't already have a house there, you can put a house there, but, you know.
When does a driveway come into play? When it has asphalt on it, concrete or stone?
It's pretty big.
It's put on dirt, huh?
A path in the woods that you can drive on.
A road is just a gravel surface for repeated traffic or something like that. The definition's pretty loose on that.
I would think it would be clear to just to leave it, to omit. It would be, it would read under item.
B.
The lot on which the structure is proposed was established and reported in the York County Register. Just leave out the clause, is undeveloped and.
Would they be back to all state language?
Yeah.
Maybe we should just say with no existing structure or with no previous structure, because we don't want to burden it.
I think it would be a very small, though. I just don't see, I mean, offhand, I can't even think of any. Not that we know of the lots in that. If there was a lot across the street, it would be under the same ownership as the main lot anyway. I mean, it would be another point where we could legitimately say to a public gathering that we made the state language less stringent. Be more inclusive, be more in favor of the applicant than the existing state language.
So then what I'm hearing now is that we're not going to eliminate the two of them. We're just going to keep one of them.
Eliminate and bring back a new one, which is similar to the original version. Just put more state language into it.
With more state language, okay.
Is there one that posts, that actually is legal by the state language? Or part of one?
People have more confidence in state language.
No, I think one, we already said, was, I think the one selected would actually violate state regulations.
They didn't clarify, they took the wording pertaining to this developed and undeveloped wholesale from the planning board work. And they, in order for it to have been legal, they would have had to use the term as it is in the state ordinance. So stipulating that the lot is undeveloped, they omitted two words.
In the end, we're going to end up with two different numbers. And one's going to be inside and one's going to be outside. And that's how it's going to, I can see it coming down.
But when you talk upstairs, did they give you an indication where they're going with this? So as far as you know, they're just waiting for us to make an appeal to them?
Yeah.
So are we in agreement of some sort? We eliminate undeveloped. We pretty much agree with Tom's proposal, although he's going to get it typed for us so that we can look at it in more place. Any other issues that we need to talk about as far as that's concerned? Overall, here in.
Why didn't you take out the hundred-year flood plan and stuff?
Because if it's in the hundred-year flood plan, it's in the shoreline zone.
Oh, so it wouldn't really be changing to.
Why? I think by the time we look at where we're headed, it's the same thing that we have in B. So we could just strike out A and be all set.
You think? You don't? And you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Still thinking?
Yeah, no, I'd be all right with that. Because we've gotten over the hump of the undeveloped versus developed by embracing, by omitting the term altogether, thereby embracing both situations.
I mean, the key factor is there's no other place on the property for them to do anything except for in the buffer zone.
Right.
They're not going to be in the actual resource. They're going to be in the buffer zone. Sometimes it's two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty feet of buffer, so. And there, if it's a two-hundred-and-fifty foot buffer, they're not going to be building a hundred feet away. I would assume that they're going to be, you know, just fifty, sixty feet in that buffer. So.
And there is the language in there that they cannot come any closer than seventy-five feet.
And maxed out at fifteen hundred square feet.
And we're still okay with that number, regardless of what we're talking, as we were stating before about the driveway and things that are there already? So what determines what's included in the eighteen hundred? Or did I miss that?
The fifteen hundred is ground floor area of a principal and accessory structure. So it's not talking about the driveway or anything like that. They would be limited with their twenty percent of non-vegetated area that's already in the ordinance.
We did make somewhat of a, I would be proposing somewhat of a substantive change there. Because I would go back and include the state language of the second clause there that says the total footprint, comma. I would include the state language of including cantilever or similar, but hanging extensions in the planning board version. I think we had omitted that.
We did, because Ken said it was a pain to calculate.
That was Chip. Where is Chip?
Sounds good.
So I still guess I'm sensing that something needs to be written.
So I still guess I'm sensing that something needs to be written. You know, people say it's the same thing, but then I can hear it as all these other little things coming through.
Yeah, no, it ought to be, I'll, if Brendan has the time to.
If it's a cantilever overhang, just the, on the gable end or something, I don't see that as a huge issue. And if it's a cantilever deck, that's going to be part of your 1500 square feet, so I'd still leave it out. I don't see it as a big deal.
Some people can't leave the level, right?
That would be ground floor. If you have the old split levels where the first story is 24 and the second story is 26, it's 26 feet on the, of ground cover. The overhangs would be measured for distances from the setback, so if they had to be 200 feet away from the wetland, they'd have to be 202 because the overhang's got to commit that two feet or whatever, so I wouldn't count the overhangs as the ground cover, not only, but.
You wouldn't get into a pissing match with carports or anything like that, you know, just a roofed area.
That's a structure.
Okay, so that would be included within the 1500?
Yep.
Just make common sense.
It would just be the eaves and overhangs really.
So Tom, is there anything that you're really seeing that compared to what we had before? Anything that you really want to see added back into that from what we took out last time?
Let me, I don't know if there is any more, let me just read the.
When he slipped out, when he take out.
He's seeing if there's anything else that he has left that he wants added into it.
Yeah, I mean, if we take out undeveloped and if we don't talk about cantilevers, then we're pretty much factual.
What we have now, and I mean, we must have kicked that around for a half a dozen meetings last time.
That really went through the roof. It was really only a couple of meetings because remember we had the deadline, that's why we never even bothered really discussing the bigger shoreline because we knew we wouldn't be able to take it to the state to get permission or whatever in times. I mean, I remember that being a deadline, so.
We kind of had it on the back burner and we bounced around a bit fast and it just kind of rolled in.
Well, yeah, but I mean, as far as the actual discussion, discussion though, yeah, it's been a lot of time not being discussed, but.
And to look at.
But, okay, so now why am I envisioning people being able to build houses that are bigger than 1500 square? I mean, I think that's the thing with the overhang, if they're, are we going to be able to have it not be split levels so that they don't, you know? I mean, how are you?
That would be about the face of their ass, right?
Well, what if the top floor is bigger than the, what if the top floor is bigger than the ground floor, is what I'm asking.
You still have lot coverage issues to pin you on, you bump up against those, I guess.
Okay, and the deck counts?
Deck counts. It's cantilever or not, most.
All right, I know we have one all through this before, I've just got this checklist.
But I mean, if you look at it as 4226B is in effect right now and we don't have any applications pending, I mean, it's been in effect for half a year, nobody's committed yet, so.
Do we allow, I was.
So then 35 feet to keep one and eliminate the other?
Thirty-five feet.
So I guess then we have another meeting. Is there a reason to vote right now or do you prefer to vote right now?
Let's, can I pose one question? Is there, with the discussion where it is now, is there any changes that anybody wants to add to the existing 4226B? Do we need to tinker with that or can we just make this clean and just say A goes, we propose A goes and B remains?
I think that's the easiest thing for the public to absorb.
Yeah.
And then if for some reason people do come in and we do have a couple of conditional uses and it's like, oh, never thought of that, but it didn't follow them yet.
Do you see any omissions in there that hit you right away?
It, once we use it, then we'll realize what we've missed or this or that, but I don't think so. I think we hashed it around pretty good to get it to where it is.
I'd be, that's a pretty clean way to do it. For some reason, I feel like we're going around circles.
Yeah.
Are we all agreeing?
I mean, I guess we wouldn't be going around in circles if the Board of Slaymen come back with their own next stretch.
Strike out B.
And move that to, you know, I guess not square one, but.
Let me just call the Bundy family.
We just have to give the two different numbers this time instead of one number.
I still think.
Shotguns only, Tom. No conditions.
I still think that if the special exception was in the shoreline zone, that this board would be able to take the application and make sure there's plenty of safeguards for building in there, you know? I don't think you're talking about a lot of lots, but.
It's true, it'll still be out of my control.
Can I, can I ask you a question? You don't have to give me an answer. The numbers of people that came in and gave rise to 4226A, does any of this pertain to their situations, the ones that you're aware of?
I was just speaking to somebody today that is in the shoreline zone and their lot is totally in resource protection. I told them there's probably nothing you can do unless you were able to purchase more land and make the lot bigger.
Yeah.
But a lot of them are the new resource protection, which is outside of the shoreline zone, is a lot of the affected ones.
Are we helping them?
Outside the shoreline zone, yeah. Well, technically, no, because they can hardly do it.
The way it is right now.
The way it is right now.
It's already legal.
We're getting rid of the confusion.
It's, oh, definitely, something has to be cleaned up here.
So someone came in today and they can't use this, they can't use it.
Because they're in the shoreline zone, the wetland is greater than 10 acres.
So they're, yeah, so they're in the shoreline zone, but we see we have two legal.
But they're more stringent, lies outside the shoreline.
Okay.
And how dare.
But the state would be more stringent if we had to follow the straight rules, the state rules for, I know, I keep going around this one too. Isn't it more stringent if, say, that person came to us and we were to apply the state rules, that would be applying the more stringent because we would only be letting them do the 15 thing with the cantilevers and 1500 with the cantilevers and the, they better not need a driveway.
Yeah.
Bill, the question that one of you ladies asked was, what about a situation where they're intruding only partially on the buffer? They could build a 30,000 square foot building as long as they exceed. They couldn't incur any more intrusion than 1500 in that buffer, but outside of that, if it was, you know, say a corner of this was in the buffer, they could build as much as their lot coverage allowed them to do.
But I think if they came into the planning board with 3,000 square foot home already and they needed to get into the resource protection, you'd probably say, no, you've got plenty of room outside. So you'd have to look at what's reasonable and I think 1500 square foot is reasonable. So if they already have 1500 square foot with their proposal and they needed a couple of hundred square foot more in the buffer, right, would think, no, you got plenty.
Yeah, I think the only way that could happen, I think with what you're saying, is if they had something built already in the resource, wanted to extend that, couldn't, but then had all the property in the back that wasn't, they could build something very big and attach it.
Yeah, yeah.
Without getting. Any problem. Well, then is there a motion?
We have some public here, I don't know if they want to have any input or.
Paul, you want to say anything?
Okay. I think it's interesting that you took a long walk around the block and ended up where you were all of a long ago. I do agree that option B, as you had proposed before, as far as I can tell, is legal and you can, you know, you're comfortable with it. The only real question is whether the planning board will be recommending and/or the selectmen will be allowing both A and B to be tossed because there did seem to be a ground swell for doing that. So I would recommend, I would suggest that either A be polled and then optionally B be polled, or that they both be polled and then optionally B put back. You know, just, I know that we're being more permissive with putting B in than having neither of them in there and your rationale for that seems reasonable, but I, again, I kind of encountered after the fact, a fair number of people who were fairly up in arms about getting rid of both of them so that it would be less permissive the way it was prior to this whole little fiasco starting.
Do I make a motion to keep B?
One second. Comments?
This is tricky to figure out how to do it in a way.
Yes, I'm wondering how you're going to write the article on the warrant.
Oh, I just do a, strike out, are you in favor of striking out the following verbiage and you take A and just strike it all out? Then we're not adding anything or anything and maybe it's small steps, start with striking one out and then if the other what's left needs work, we fix it the next year. But at least the, and basically, I mean, it's going to take a lot to convince the public that there's no change because this is really the ordinance that's in effect now because it was more stringent than the other one. If A is staying in place, then it needs to have all the state verbiage put into it. So.
You think we'll end up with an A and a B that one will be inland or will be shoreline or will be not shoreline?
The people would vote to not strike out A would be the only way that stayed.
Yeah.
But it has to be.
We could go for try, try to strike it out and if not, we'll just have to insert state language.
Well, it'd stay the same.
Well, we'd have to change it to so it would be legal.
To take out the select.
Oh, it would stay the same, but then it would still have to be changed after. It's illegal, right?
I would assume if the selectmen were going to keep that ordinance.
You're striking out the selections part.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then leaving the planning board's part.
Right.
And I would assume if the selectmen were going to agree with that or disagree with that and leave A in, they would have the verbiage done.
Right.
To fix their.
Yeah, which is really feeling simple, so you'd have, could possibly be two out of
striking one out or fixing one, which would leave B in place.
The only way to do it is just leave the one that doesn't need the state regulation, leave that one in there, let the state knock out.
But it's outside, I don't know, it's inside.
It's inside, yeah, yeah.
And then when knocked out, they would just fix it or let it comply.
Yeah, that's what I keep saying, I mean.
Let me just.
We're going to end up with a different, again.
All right, any other comments?
So the motion was to keep B and not strike out.
The motion was specifically to.
Keep B. Yeah, I didn't say the other half, so someone else has to say that.
I would amend that motion, may I, to suggest that we are to revoke A as one vote, give the public the opportunity to vote on that for clarity's sake and then, I hate to use the word retain.
Just leave it there?
Just leave it there.
Strike out A.
I responded to what Paul was saying too, it seemed like a lot of the, I mean, obviously there's a lot of representation that happened on the town floor and a lot of opposition to B did not, doesn't necessarily seem very factual, but kind of B got thrown into the A in terms of being a legal law.
And that was a referendum vote and hopefully if it's actually on the town meeting, then it can be discussed and any of the unclearness could be cleared out.
No, I meant at the last town meeting, was it October? November.
Before.
So it still seems like that we have some confusion here.
Well, let me, may I rephrase my amendment?
Just withdraw yours.
There'd be one vote and the vote would be to see if the town shall revoke 4226A. There you go, that would be my motion.
You're okay with that, Jess?
Yeah.
All right, is there a second then to, okay, thank you.
Second second then?
Just seconded.
Tom's amendment.
Tom's amendment.
My motion still exists.
So I don't have to put yours in the motion?
So you're not amending hers, you're scratching yours.
Yeah, yeah.
Fine, okay, so you're making the motion.
Two, let's get this.
Okay.
Two.
You're right.
Thank you.
Where the warrant article says that, it would be, shall the town vote to repeal or revoke, whatever's more appropriate, Article 4226A.
And Jess, you seconded, correct. Questions, comments on the new motion?
So essentially, we would be putting a warrant article, just striking out A.
Yes, giving the townspeople the opportunity to vote on that.
Paul, bear. Paul opposed? All right, that's probably. Three, four. All right, any other, anything else coming up? What do we need to talk about?
Next meeting, Monarch is coming before us, they finalize that.
The gas truck is still in there. I thought you said it was gone.
They're not supposed to be using it, they get deliveries, so we'll have to see what they have to say. What they have to say.
Are they hauling it?
Well, on the old permit. So that's something to think about for the next meeting. Anything else?
Can I make a suggestion? I noticed that sitting here through these different hearings, and wouldn't it be a lot easier for the person who's coming before the board with their petitions or whatnot? If Ken could give them something in advance by what you just reviewed with their letter in front of them, you say here, you've got to answer all these questions before, at the board at the first meeting.
He does that.
That's being, we keep repeating it all the time.
Which power?
You know, we keep asking, yes, you did, well, you did make it the way we wanted it and no, you did this and that and that, and we owe 10 meetings before we finally say, okay, you're good to build, you can do what you want to do. You know, I mean, we ask, you know, the same question over and over again.
You can only tell them so many times.
Yeah, what I mean to say is, is there a way to shorten it, what I'm trying to say? That we can go from 10 meetings with these people, they'd be down to seven.
Well, they haven't showed up for the last six weeks.
Oh, no, I'm not talking just the one, I'm talking in general. You're not talking just one particular floor, I'm talking in general, if you have a way that we could sort of shadow, you know, bring it to a small amount of meetings that we have to hold before these people get their permits.
We had one workshop, we had a workshop, yeah. We had one meeting, I think this is before you were on, one subdivision before you got here and they kept coming in, but very little, we'd ask them enough and they came in with less and less and we do require the information a week ahead of time.
If they do something like that, why don't you just say deny? You know, you may say, why should deny, no bother coming back?
Somebody's paying an engineer, he's ready to come here and so financially, they're penalizing themselves versus having their information.
It's kind of stupid to sit there and say, tell the guy five times, cancel the same question and then he get the wrong answer, then he's coming back and it's just a waste of our time or a waste of their time.
Well, we're here all, we're here twice a month, no matter what.
Yeah, but still, we say we had 10 different events in front of us in one time, like say next spring, and there's people who want to open up a bracko pit to someone with a subdivision, this kind of thing's going, and we can't regulate to say, okay, look. what kind of thing's going, and we can't regulate to say, okay, look, we want this information at the first B B.
We have those, for the subdivision, that's what the subdivision book is, he hasn't gotten his subdivision book yet, right?
I just did today.
That's what is in the subdivision book, the person who comes to you presenting the project needs to look at that book and talk to Ken. They never come in here cold, they always come in here having talked to Ken, having put started, have they started a plan, but it's not our fault when they don't follow through, or they think that we're some kind of bush overs, and they try and trick us.
No, I'm not saying it's our fault, I'm saying, I'm in the department, maybe too, so I'm, I'm not trying to joke the way we can, I'm trying to say is, look, if these guys come in and give us the same stupid answer time after time, is it time to say, look buddy, until you get your ducks in, I'll stay home?
But a lot of it...
Don't bother, we're wasting our time.
A lot of it, they'll come in with a sketch plan, and they want us to put input on it, or you guys to, you know, as a regular subdivision cluster, and I mean, it takes quite a few meetings to weed that stuff out, and then when the plans come and they're missing a few this or missing that, and...
I mean, I know when we were doing the subdivision over on Mason Road, and I'm sure Bill was thinking this thing took forever, but I thought it kind of moved along, you know? I didn't think it was really unrealistic.
And that was a new survey we hadn't worked with, with plans, a lot of the other ones, they used to bring it to Southern Maine and have it all pre-approved at that level before they come to us, so the plan...
See, I'm doing this game, I'm just looking at what I've been sitting here and seeing, I'm saying myself, you know, why are they coming in here with such foolish answers? I mean, why have they had the right answers at the time? They know they've got to have these answers, why aren't they prepared?
It's a process. I mean, it's a life.
I mean, there's every way to penalize the ones that aren't. See, if you look, if you're not going, if you want to play a game here, you've got to, you know, consider wasting our time until we're going to give it to what you want, stay home, because we're not going to do it.
You don't get a chair unless you give $2.
You can't understand, we charge $10 a minute.
All right, any else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, I second?
That's good.
Second. All in favor?